All right.
The county's meeting the order, go ahead and forum. Answer the question.
And by the way, this is due by the United States of America and using the Republic, which is stands one nation under God indivisible within the routine of justice for all.
You have a mission here or there.
Allow. I will undertake a motion to allow trustee Kelly to attend the meeting electronically. If he so dialed in.
I'm making a motion.
Question to comment, real far.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Klein, aye. Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Kretke?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Anyone signed up for public audit?
No, no one signed up.
Could have been eight minutes from October 1st by 20. Is review those ready, change of direction, correct? We got to, um, know the attorney, Mr. Schuster, who had, that we did last week.
Big last.
I know, but it's not them minutes that we did last year.
Did that. Could you clarify that one last time?
I was sort of asking you.
Do we need to motion you or Brad in if you're attending electronically or only elected officials?
Uh oh.
Mayor, it's it's only.
I don't put, I don't believe you need to motion anyone in. Uh, you certainly do not need to motion me in.
Yeah, well.
But. Uh, because they they've altered the law a little bit during this COVID emergency to allow for this type of attendance.
All right.
But there's.
In our meetings.
The minutes should show who's present physically and who's present via Zoom. So a motion's a good way to do that.
Right there, there. Is somebody from EEI online? Is that Julie Morrison?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then with plus two, too.
I'm going with a little drop, right? All right, let's continue. So immediate minutes for October 1st, any changes? Can you undertake a motion to approve the minutes presented? So moves. Right then. Uh, there's talk with that. Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Klein, President. Mr. Coe?
Present.
Mr. Kretke?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right, before we have the village manager's report, Mr. Hedges.
Mr. Mayor, we have the honor of having the village president, Bob Walsh, in the audience with us tonight. And, uh, trustee Kretke asked me to phone him on Friday, we spoke, and I would like to talk to us a little bit about the possibility of, um, uh, Burlington and then to an agreement with the village, uh, you, uh, the sewer treatment. So with that, I'll just let Bob explain the situation, okay?
Mayor Walsh?
Thank you for yourself.
Come on, right to the mayor's chair.
Um, thanks, thanks for the action, thanks to Peter Meganeston and Jay for the conversation. I would say I see Ryan a lot of Central West meetings. This has been on the Village Burlington's, uh, projects, uh, process agenda for many years. And it's by by the village itself, when both came to our village, we had the opportunities, we thought we were going to have a sewer treatment plan. I was a trustee then, but at that time, but that that changed and, um, and we did, we were able to, to, uh, EEI, I run a pretty small world, is also the initial term for the village of, by my house. Um, there's a bunch, um, but so they they had built and built, um, drawn up a sewer treatment plan for the village, which is about eighty, eighty-five percent. Even this process though in time though, really there's the village Burlington is much smaller than, than you can tell. Than Hampshire, so a lot of the activities were needed by growth. It's a little more difficult to do these days than it was fifteen years ago. However, um, now we have the opportunity through the grant system that allows us to move ahead. In in particular, categories that we're all under right now are unsued communities. So that's how this is going to place. There's also the signing grant, there's two grants in particular, and how you qualify for those, obviously their population incomes and so forth. So we spoke with Mayor and this is a while back. In that time, for a couple of years, back and forth to Central West. But the, um, if they were never, Village of Hampshire would ever entertain or give us the opportunity to, if you're sewer, to, to treat our sewage. Obviously, the grant would would allow us to build the separate, sort of, separate for that. And then we would pump so that there's about, if you look at costs in dollars, it's probably a tenderly valued project. The grant that's out there is a five million dollar grant. There are four, four or five years, there are twenty million dollars that are supposed to be allocated to. Um, people say often, you know what, be patient, but you wait, you have to be patient because when the opportunity comes, you have to pursue it. When you pursue it, you also find out the caveats, how difficult it can be. So and for the village of Burlington, while a lot of things are off, grants are done as shovel ready projects, this is one that is not. They can't qualify totally. So, um, what we what we have had EEI generals in particular, EPA up association, we learned only about a week and a half ago that this was available. We started to pursue immediately, but the last four meetings, Village Burlington takes the next step. One would be, one of the pieces is that you would consider this. So there's about, if if the settlement is made, we do have a point of discharge from the gate, like the creek. We pick that every year, keep that up. We have the area planning, which is a sewer treatment plant, so pretty well find out. The next part is the sewer treatment plant. And because the grant is for unsued communities, it's not for new growth. If you can add two of these, you can build and make these larger. But at this time, we would be in positions trying to just establish that. Part of that is, is our village is about a hundred and ten years old. So, you know, there are like the neighborhood that I live in, I'm only twenty. Those, um, stuff that feels very new, that's not a concern. There's also Rolling Oaks, which has its first housing twenty years ago. So they've owned their first lot, it's being built now. So there's a little bit of activity. But in order to get to that, get over the hump, it's like you have to achieve the sewer treatment plan. It's always one of the goals to do that, much for the village. And it can't be done very quick. What we also learned in this grant, the one of the planning grant, that would help us get more processes in place. This, what we have learned, uh, today with EPA's response was that, look, you first off is the value of, um, the income, household income. The state's is much lower than actually the residents for the agriculture. Burlington, so they don't qualify for the entire amount. You have to have a lot of things in place that completely are drawn sewer treatment plants. They'd like to have easements in place, things like that. Those are achievable, but that's not part of the grant, like, um, having easements to access. But the, um, to pump our sewer, obviously, our sewage, we're adding to your village sewer treatment plant. Over the years, we do know that there is some ability on that based on, like, you're my neighbor, and I am my neighbor's, just to learn. Because from that, you know, whether it be Virgil or Hampshire or Sycamore or Elgin, um, you learn what, how do we make this happen now, how do we not? Um, so if you bring this, I'm bringing this to the board because it may not, we will probably not qualify this year for one of those five million dollar grants. Because there's not enough information there to qualify. But we want to pursue that. And so even with the, um, the planning grant, we can accomplish some of that. So what that, just, you know, how that develops in places, probably if we were like most developments, if this was the point through, if a plant grant, probably a two, two-year process before you're actually cleaning anything with it, pretty common. And if, and if we go to next year, which is what we will do, we will continue, if the board sold, just lets us, allows us, will continue to chase down the pieces to achieve that. The key obviously is one of those components, is it, we have a place that, and, uh, and we can pump sewage, those to Village Hampshire for X amount of years, whatever that is. If it's five years, if it's eight years, it's ten. The tenure range is pretty more ideal. If you took that from today and two years from now, you're pumping, everything well, you're pumping sewage. It gives you time to clean up what's in town, the infrastructure, and you can pump that sewage, and so you have that working functioning, but at a low level. And then it also brings the opportunity for some type of growth because there's the capacity, and we can add on to that. The other part, ultimately, our intent for the village would be that the, you know, totally capable of handling our sewer treatment plant. It's just, in today's world, you have to look for something out of the box, how do you get started? The other side of that point, you know, is not, that's not, that's not even a can, you have to pursue, how do you do sewer treatment plant? But there's a lot of pieces to this. And I, I mean, I can answer questions if there are some, but I just try to give you the basic idea. Well, you know, this is possible on the road, and I know that, um, like you say, there's more information every day. We haven't given up on the EPA yet, we're still chasing it. There's other avenues to make this grant a little quicker, based on the information that we already have. So.
Do you have any kind of a projected volume?
I think we're at a hundred twenty-five, a hundred thousand gallons. It's, and it's pretty much like.
Is that just doing a great math pro, uh, formula?
I rely on EEI for a lot of that, so, you know, for their information, obviously, their projections were, I think, a.
Hundred fifteen thousand per year.
Hundred.
Hundred, excuse me, hundred fifty thousand gallons per.
Per year, yeah, so.
And the really right now is using a million gallons per year. Out of our total capacity of about two.
Letting go per day.
Sorry, per day. Out of our total capacity of about two point seven.
Yeah. So is is the idea to hook up your old part of town?
Yes.
The existing homes and then send the F woman our way? What is, what, what is the cost to do all, because obviously you guys are on a loan, it's up big, right?
Yes.
To, to.
Oh, yes, no, we have city water.
Yeah. What about the, the bar and the gas station and all that?
They're, that's, it's all, they're all, everything's on setback, but it's city, it is city water.
So we're going to be providing water as well?
Yeah, we.
Water and shore?
They have water. We have water for, for the village itself, for Village Burlington. So that's our, our, we have five wells.
Okay.
It's a nice very well.
You would be putting in brand new infrastructure to the existing homes.
Correct.
Sewer pipe.
Correct.
And then bring that pipe to.
To reset.
Plank in French to.
Yes.
Probably the Hampshire Hills.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's very.
So what, what is the cost to do that? Have you guys looked?
Well, in the, in the process, within the grant, that five million dollars would.
That's all for the, the?
So with what we've learned today about dollars, household, okay, we have, we have to give you some more on how we're going to achieve balance. We are in the black, we're functioning as a village very well, but we're very, you know, the context and what we're doing, we have to. And so the, the other parts of that is, is the other grants can develop, that would coincide and work with that. There's also what will the EPA allow? Because in the state legislature, it's also, you need to compete, continue on the, on pursuing this from every avenue. Otherwise, there's just no giving up. A point of that, standing here today, I, I, two weeks ago, I didn't know it would be. But when that opened up, you can have that, you got to know, and speaking with Jay, we spoke about thirty-five minutes on Friday. Yeah, we have some insight, we have an idea. You know, the, the components to put that all together, it's always a cost involved, planning, grant helps you get there, which is another, another source with it. And EPA recognizes all these things coming together. You're, you're making the product, the effort to get to where you need to be, and then the village needs to stay itself. See, control. So if development comes, whatever it may be, whether it's pressure or the village eventually can develop that here, other grants and other loans that you can get at low costs to build the other, the other half, call it, the other half.
And any residents are prepared to pay for sewer, they have paid for the path?
We always have a charge. Any, we haven't come up with the numbers on that, we are working on that. But when you look at the, um, the pros and the cons, you, you, I mean, you can hook up in Old Town Shit. That's why that this unsued community grant is so perfect for that situation. They recognize the smaller towns in the state, obviously they're all over, but, you know, being, being in the black and keeping things under control, yeah, we have a lot of needs. We rely on grants, but, but we still, you know, we should make this move ahead. So it's a good sound plan.
So is, is B and B, uh, they, fifteen years ago or so, they were going to build the sewage plant?
They, they wanted, they wanted, we, they came to our board, we would not, at the time of the, we did not build, we were not going to build. There was, um. One of the homes was one of them, was a gateway site. And there was, there's a couple, and they were right, you had developments in front of you, the property was, it was going quick, and it was right to the wire when this was. And the other side of this, if that development had taken minutes, Brooklyn Village might have been very, very, very. So, so we probably were better off in this seat, but we still have to get, we have to get to where we need to go in the future. I was going to twenty, we have.
Okay. Well, this is going to fall into the, uh, public works, uh, committee section. There's going to be a lot, you know, how do we build, how do we, how do we?
There's a lot of work.
There's a lot of work to be done.
But this is the first step. Consider that. Oh. Okay, any questions?
Any questions for that?
If, if you do in the future.
Great, man. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd like to introduce to Steve Burgland, who's the president and CEO of Midwest Companies Construction. Um, and his, his chief financial officer, uh, they were kind enough to call and let us know that they purchased some property, have an option on some property and. If you wouldn't mind, Steve, uh, also if you could share with the village board what you shared with us about some other property you bought in town, right? And your connections in Hampshire, I really appreciate that.
Okay.
And, uh, so I, I think this is a really interesting proposal, it will be very popular with our contractors in town, builders. So with that, please proceed. Steve, Josh, had your slides up on the screen.
Okay.
Anybody like a hard copy of the slides?
Okay, we get it.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Jerry start my own image, okay?
Thank you, Jay. And thank you, everyone, for giving us a few minutes of your time. Steve? I just wanted to start off with a brief history of the company and how we're set up, uh, from a structure standpoint. Midwest Companies is a family owned business, it's been in operation for thirty-plus years, and it's truly a family owned business. Steve and his wife Veronica own the company, they work in the business every day. Uh, two of Steve's daughters work part-time in the office, usually some accounting stuff. Me, Steve's son, Steven, runs our shop for us, and he also helps Steve in the operation. But even beyond that, Steve and Veronica treat us as employees as part of a big family. It's a very unique company structure that, quite frankly, just don't see a whole lot of these days anymore. Um, a lot of us in the office have kids, they're open to us, especially with all the e-learning and the schedule changes that we've had this year. Bring your kids in the office, if that helps you get work done, take time off, be at home with your kids. It's really a truly unique structure that you just don't see a whole lot in. Midwest Companies is a EBA for us. So to just give you a little bit of a background here, American Wood Recycling is the parent company of us. We have four active subsidiaries. First off, we've got Midwest Integrated Companies, which houses our trucking division. The trucking division primarily serves to provide transportation for our other lines of business. We do have a few third-party customers, but for the most part, it's internalizing transportation so we can get the other lines of business done.
How many trucks do you typically run?
Um, we run about four, but not just in, in the Midwest, not just here. We're big in Northern Minnesota, Northern Wisconsin.
Like truck movers that would come in and out every day?
Uh, like out of, like our proposed facility?
Yeah.
It would probably be like, uh, ten to fifteen trucks down the side there.
Midwest Transfer Logistics is basically the same function in Wisconsin. Thai Energy LLC is our Thai grinding and recy, uh, railroad tie grinding and recycling company. We have mobile grinding equipment, we go out to the customer's site, we grind up old railroad ties, and we use our MIC trucks to transport that to the final destination where that material is to go.
So do you guys grind ties onsite or at, at proposed facility or at the train yard or depot?
We would probably grind some ties, yes, at that facility.
And last but not least is Midwest Material Management. So Midwest Material Management provides three types of services for the most part. We've got construction and demolition material recycling, we've got roll-off services, and yard waste in our compost facility. So roll-off service is if you ever had your home reshangled or any remodeling, get the big dumpster that goes in your driveway, we provide that service to our customers. We have a yard waste and compost facility down in Bristol, Illinois. Put your yard waste out on the curb, garbage company picks it up, they bring it down to us, we process it, turn it into compost, we sell it to farmers, landscapers, and you and I for our home gardens. The construction demolition material recycling facility, we have a, an existing facility, I think it's been in operation for about twenty years in Eastundy. Construction and demolition material is a non-hazardous, uh, construction material, concrete, wood, drywall, shingles, metal. Think of it as the components of your home broken down into its non-hazardous form. That's what we're, that's what we take into our current existing facility. Just kind of give you a brief overview of the facility in Eastundy. So what happens is customer comes in, they bring their, I would say the, the majority of our customers are pickup trucks with trailers, contractors, and small unit type guys. They come onto our scale, they weigh in, we record that for billing purposes, they're directed into the tipping area where they dump their C and D material. That material is then called pre-sorted, where we can pull out big pieces of items that we know we can recycle, or big pieces of items that just aren't going to fit into the sort line. The remaining material is then fed into the sort line itself. It goes through a process of various, uh, screens and shakers and other conveyor belts that kind of shakes out the little pieces. The bigger pieces kind of keep going through the process, and it finally travels up a conveyor into our sort line, where we have employees that actually pick out pieces of wood, metal, shingle, and other various materials that we recycle. Anything that is not recyclable finishes off the system into a trailer that ends up going to the landfill as garbage. So what benefit does a C and D facility provide? Well, as I just said, we're recycling material that alternatively would probably just end up in a landfill. If you give it to your garbage company, they most likely would just take it out to the landfill, it's gone for good. The EPA currently requires us to recycle about seventy-five percent of all inbound materials into our facility. The last few months, we've actually been hitting the low eighties. So we're trying to pull as much material out of the garbage system, if you want to call it that, and we repurpose it. We sell it to other companies who put it back into the manufacturing process. We process it ourselves, sell it directly to end users and other various items. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, who's going to talk a little bit about the property we've already purchased, what we're looking to purchase, and what we propose to do on this property.
Thank you, great. Thank you again for the great form of time. So, three weeks ago, I closed on the eighty acre Parfiser property out in Valhalla. My, I mean, I heard a little poor voice over there. I would like to, and we are making plans to convert that farm to organic. So that's part of our composting business. We sell that product to organic farm, so now that I have a farm, it's soon to get organic, we feel it's safer, better for the brand. One of the reasons that Hampshire interests me is I have four kids, three girls and a, a boy. Um, my three daughters all live in Hampshire. So I have eight grandsons, three daughters, their husbands, so we, we want to, kind of, like Terry said, we're a family business, we like everything close because everything kind of is close. So, um, our, our vision for this project is to create a really, um, world-class facility here, not just, uh, not everybody thinks that we're just taking care of garbage, but we don't look good at that. We like to make things look nice and neat and, um, and do as good a job as we possibly can do. We own a huge, um, railroad type recycling facility in Superior, Wisconsin. It is the world-class facility in the world, and that, that's not my words, that's what everybody that visits tells us. So, um, it's FSC certified, if you know what FSC is, it's called Forest Sewership Council, it's a very hard, um, thing to get. Thai Energy, that company is FSC certified. When you ask me about railroad ties, um, it's not that I really want to grind railroad ties there, but we get railroad ties in our C and D as part of the C and D business landscape, you know, they come. So do we want to grind millions of railroad ties here? Absolutely not. So I just wanted to be honest with you. If I'm, I'm not going to tell you I'm not going to grind railroad ties there, because if I get ten in, that makes me a liar, so I just want to clarify that. So we would like to put, um, not only our C and D facility here, but we would also like to move our shop and offices from Gilbert's out here to this facility, so that would be everything kind of on one footprint. We feel that that's easier to manage. Have everything close, make it work more efficient. I don't really know that there's any, anything else, uh, you know, we've, we've been around for a while, the reason we're moving is we're losing our lease to Beverly Quarry that ends a year from fireworks. That's our interest out here. Open any questions if you've got some.
If you turn to your maps in your packet, you've got an eighteen acre parcel that is outlined, let's see here. Fire Hill Road. And that is where we're proposing to put the C and D facility, the office, and the shop in that eighteen acre parcel at this point.
Question, on the C and D stuff, are, do you grind that in, uh, to, and recycle and sell as much mulch that you can get out of it?
It goes for a lot of things, um, that being one of them, yes.
Okay, and then, you dye the mulch?
I'm not in that business, I mean, I sell it to people that do.
Okay, that's curious.
Um, mulch fueled, we, we supply power plants in the Midwest, so a certain amount of it goes for that. Um, and we sell a certain amount of it to landfills, as a beneficial reuse, they use it for roads and turnarounds. On the facility that we're looking at, um, where we would put the C and D facilities in the south end of that, just north of the tracks, and then our shop would go up and office up on top of Hill, closer to the restaurant, I guess. I could just add, uh, the, of the eighteen acre parcel, there is a portion that's already in the village and already is known. Um, so they would be contiguous, and this would require, um, an annexation agreement and rezoning. And then just as a matter of information, I hope you don't mind me mentioning this, Steve, but you've also, uh, I don't know if you have an option to purchase the additional acreage that would make that acreage contiguous to eighty acres? Yeah, the, the, the property that we're looking to buy is the whole hundred eighty-eight owned by the Tiger, so, um, that is contiguous to that eighty acres that we're purchasing. Any questions? Any, any questions about C and D facility? I know that, so let me just clarify that a little bit too, so, um, huge difference in C and D facilities, if you go on the internet. What we want to make ours is that all the material inbound is dumped inside and to control littering and blowing, you know, the weather and all that. We don't like stuff to get wet because it just gains weight, so once we're paid for it, we don't want to pay more when we have to dump it. So you would do that inside, and then once we've established like a homogeneous product, like the wood or something, that would go outside. And then we would grind that, that doesn't make a matter of few questions, that's never what you'll have for anything like that. But like to have paper and all that littered outside, that is absolutely not. And, and the way that we would design the facility is that you would be dumping so that you couldn't see that from right or over. Those trucks would be coming from the back and, and, okay?
Right.
Again, thank you so much for, I'm sorry.
That's what you do at, what plant right now?
We do it in the Beverly Quarry, but that is. We do it in the Beverly Quarry, but that is, no, we're in a 600 acre gravel pit down on the bottom. It's not, I'm just going to be honest, and that's the way I like to be. It's not a, it's not like, it's a functional facility, it's not pretty. Okay, this we would like to make pretty with landscaping. I mean, if you saw our office now, anybody to go look at our office, it's beautiful.
Your office there or your office in Gilbert?
No, we don't have an office there, but our office in Gilbert is where we park all our trucks.
It is pretty.
So the first picture you fly, Pat, is the front of our corporate office.
So that's how we like to think of it, okay? We don't, we want to be a partner with the insurance with all my kids here and everything. I don't want to be a bad actor. It's not, it's not my goal to be a, not a good neighbor. Because I really value my reputation with my kids and my grandsons. And I would like, and I would value it with all of you as well. So we'd like to be a partner. I think Jay pointed out that if this goes through, we'd be the fifth largest landlord in the city. And I want to be considered a friend and a partner, not somebody that's a, you know.
What hours of operations do you guys run there?
Uh, currently, currently we're six to four at the facility that we're at right now.
So even all truck repairs and all that's done, six to four?
No, that in their shop, we, that's, we start that at four in the morning.
But that would be inside anyways. Air runs under the parking.
I don't think, you know, relative to what else is doing this, not different kind of hours. So yeah, we're usually there at four o'clock.
There any services that our residents will be able to take advantage of that you offer?
They can dump here as well.
Because I think like once upon a time, there was a, there was talk of the, oh, dumping the composting facility where residents could drop and stuff like that.
That was, that was true.
So I just want to make something very clear. We are not any way shape or form that we want to put a yard waste transfers facility here or any kind of compost.
No, I understand, I'm using that as an example.
No, I don't.
That was one of the things that, you know, specifically said that if this were to take place, that the residents would be able to take advantage of this facility.
No, we want to, we don't want, we're not an over problem, we're not going to be an over problem. We don't want to be a unsightly problem. Want to be a gem, not, not where you want to turn your head and plug your nose with your car.
You do some, you do do some commercial recycling. You went off to that service to some of our businesses, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, 80% of the business that I get now is outside people. 20% of it is derived from our own, our own boxes, so.
What's your timeframe for getting everything up and running?
Third quarter of next year.
Third quarter?
They would like to move through this, we're planning on moving through the same process with the Crown project because they have to go through the same processes, so the same word, the same zoning, board of deals and complaint meeting. Their option is through the end of the year right now in the land. It can be extended probably until January, which is the same timetable as Crown and School. We'd like to be moving during, you know, as soon as the weather provides.
And how many employees do you have? How many employees?
About 100 in the whole company.
The whole company?
Yeah.
How many would be working on?
60.
25, 30, something like that.
We need shot the office. I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay.
So the mysterious wall has a question, and it's more for the board or for Jay. What's the, where are we at on the plan for the intersection of 72 and Briar Hill Road? As far as having a light installed, having some type of accident deterrent put in there?
Five years away?
Trust me, Kelly, first of all, to this project, they realized there's a weight limit on the railroad tracks so they would have to take all their traffic north on Briar Hill Road.
So that would be taking 20 to Allen Road and then down Allen from Brian, Briar to Briar Hill?
That's correct. There's a weight limit at the railroad tracks there. Even the fire department has to get special permission to go across those tracks. So there would be no impact and the answer to your question is nowhere.
My question is null and void if they're not driving that way. I just saw the increased traffic.
Well, we are nowhere on that intersection.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, but all right.
As long as he's here. Well, we've tried, the problem is it's not in our village, so it's not going to come to you.
So you're leaving February and you're here in Hank, you said?
I have to be out of there at the end of February 22.
And Bill, then do you all go for a plant there?
No, I've just decided not to renew it at least.
Danny, David or Ray.
Sorry?
Danny, David or Ray.
On the last page of our slider, we've got our question. Get free to choose any question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't feel an obligation to stay.
Better walk out with me.
Thank you everybody. Mr. Mayor, with that, we have a resolution accepting certain public improvements on and related to the Pedag project in the village. Turn it over to Attorney Schuster. But Julie is with us also, there are also engineering questions. There are a lot of documents in your packet, so this is a rather complex closeout. But it's going very well. And so with that, Mark, are you there?
I am. All right. This is, this normal process is to have an inspection. There is then a certificate issued by the village engineer that the improvements are ready for acceptance. When that occurs, there must be a maintenance bond that's posted. So though all those events have occurred, you have documentation in your package. You have the certificate, you have a rider to the original bond that shows the reduction in the amount. Therefore, there's a resolution for you to accept the public improvements. I would note in section three, we took a detour since my original draft. And the second part of that section three, where it talks about releasing the bond, is not, we'll have to modify that because what they did instead was modify their bond, that number 106924532. So section three should say that Northern Builders has delivered to the village clerk a maintenance bond in the correct amount in the form of a rider to bond number 106924532 that was previously issued. And we, the village accepts that bond and will hold that as the maintenance bond for this project. Sorry, I didn't catch that before I went into the package.
Is stuff correct, 48,000?
It is 48, 963, 45.
Any question or comments? It, just to clarify, the grass that's growing on the side of Ryan Drive and at the intersection of Ryan and Flanagan, there's still piles of dirt, not grass. And that sign, their big sign needs to come down too. That should all be part of closing this out. But I don't know why they keep saying that they're going to fix the grass, they're going to fix the grass. But there's literally just piles of dirt. I don't know why.
I spoke to Mark Gordon again yesterday. He's focused more on the memorial areas. And so I reminded him today that we have, they have to get all of it right away in proper condition. They did offer to maintain it through the end of the year at their own expense, which they didn't have to. But that doesn't substitute for actually properly landscaping, so they understand.
It looks terrible. So why don't we, why don't we approve this pending them fixing it? Well, there's enough money, the 48,000 will certainly cover that. But I just wonder why they haven't done it. They have worked on this memorial site, the bench still is not there. But they have, they have greatly improved that area. But I just want to make sure they don't recite that the grass is locally lacking, you can call it that, the tattered spots. And they're aware, but I would like to see them do something about it before too late in the season.
Their whole company, and I think they do not have the projects, but they realize this is an obligation.
Yep. All right, any other questions or comments you want anyone to add?
I just have one thing about this project in general. We annexed this property into the village when we moved forward and we took it, you know, and now it's part of the village. And I kept their operation here from, instead of moving it to into the city like they thought that they might. So that was, that was a big win for the village. I feel like the way we went about it is we did everything within our right, right? We took, the property was a township, they maintained the road, they improved the road. Company came, we annexed it into the village, and they did, you know, $100,000 worth of roadway improvement that they had the budget for and all this. And then the village just comes in and says, okay, that's really great, we improved the road, we're taking it. And so I don't, I think the next time we get involved with a project like this, I think we need to at least let the council know that we're planning on doing this or something, and then it should be the way that I would feel. Like if the village invested all this money in something and the state just came by and took it, we don't be mad.
Sure, that's why they call it eminent domain.
No, I understand that. But $100,000 in a month. I mean, it's just, it's so, we didn't break any laws. We didn't, you know, they knew that this was happening and it's within our right to do.
Right.
I just, I think that there needs to be a conversation next time or something. And we need to be doing something to help each other out. They improved the road, they budgeted for it. Right, it was their road and they budgeted for it. And ultimately, they, you know, they approved it and we took it, just like that. And then they ultimately, ultimately it would have been somebody else's responsibility to improve it. Or maybe we would have said that a roadway needs to be improved or part of the negotiations.
But Pedag doesn't even, they front with Bear Road, is that what you're talking about? They don't, they don't access with Bear Road, so they have no, they would have no reason to.
Pedag doesn't impact with my.
No, I understand that, but it wasn't our road to improve it. They did. I just, that was my only.
The way it's worked for 100 years around here. I mean, no, I understand that, but this is. You have to add it to the other side of the road, then close the road.
I don't know what. If anything, it adds a burden to us, I mean, right? Because now it's our responsibility, we pay it.
No.
I get what you're saying, it depends, I don't know that township, I don't, it just depends on, I guess. That sense of ownership, how important that is to this.
No, it's not a matter of whether or not we should take it, okay? I agree, there's a burden and all that. I'm just saying that we know with our budget being as limited as it is, when we want to do projects or anything of that nature, we have to budget for it, things get cut and stuff like that. So from the perspective of they cut and planned and all this kind of other thing, and then we just, they took it. Or they paid the road and then we came, okay, it's not our responsibility. Okay, long term, we have to plow, we can get all that other stuff. But it was, it was like right after they did work.
Did someone from the township mention it to you?
And it's just, you know, like I said, we didn't do anything wrong. And they understand that we didn't do anything wrong. But boy, at the same time, you know, maybe we could have split the project with them or something, you know? It just doesn't, just doesn't seem right, that's all. But it's the way it's worked for 100 years, we didn't do anything wrong, and I understand all that stuff. But you know what I'm saying, like.
And they, the work that they did preceded the actual, because the Pedag thing happened pretty quick. We gained that, right? Hey, why don't you improve this road? Wink, wink. And then they put the $100,000 in and then we, I don't think that.
Again, again, we didn't do anything wrong, there wasn't anything nefarious. It's just the circumstances in which it happened, you know? I know that they were hurt over, they were trying to plan for these factors.
Okay, so is Briar Dela Township Road? Tell them not to pave it.
Well, that was another conversation I was thinking about. That's really provocative, that I was looking at this and going, man, how many teams that road did they pave? You know?
It's not paved.
So.
So what you're saying is you'd just like to have the conversation, like.
That means that we would have to know like what their projects are that they're planning and.
Right. I just think it's, you know, like the gentleman before us was trying to be a good neighbor. He wants to be a good part of the community and just.
Any further? Unless resolution to accept pay. I don't want to pay the motion to a, oh, resolution 20-13, a resolution accepting certain public improvements on and related to Pedag project in the village.
You're moved.
Any questions or comments?
I don't think we should do anything in the village about fix the problem.
The money, the money is there to fix the problem.
That's the only thing, I was with you, but then he says there's still money being held back that could be used for that.
That's the purpose of those.
Toby, which, which problem are you referencing?
The grass and piles of dirt that they've moved on from.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I do have confidence they will fix it, but it's taken them quite a while. But there is quite more than enough money revenue in the situation.
Is, is there a timeline expectation to have if we're closing this out? What is there a, expectations or an end date of when that has to be fixed by? Or is it just one day we will get it fixed because we happen to have the money for it?
But the bond will be held for one year. And I have commitments from Mark Gordon that they'll have the property in proper shape before the snow flies.
This year?
This year.
So like in a couple of weeks?
Flowers, candy.
Pretty cold, more than two weeks, Mr. Kelly.
You know my, what I'm saying though. We're like two board meetings away from that happening, so.
Got you. All right. That's right.
Go call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Nate.
Ms. Klein. Ms. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion to, we request a motion to award the Island Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project to the low bidder, Stark &amp; Sons, Trenching Inc., in the amount of $83,932. You have in your packet a, an agenda supplement provided by Tim Paulson, who's on a, on a call with us tonight. And I'll point out that the board authorized up to $125,000 for this project. And at this point, with the bid in, including engineering costs, the bid was $83,795. Engineering costs for the project are $19,852. So the project will be $103,647.
How much should we budget?
$125,000. So it's over $20,000 below budget.
Get this level up.
Which is, yeah. Well, we're going to talk about revenue forecast a little later, question, question, coach. Not to throw cold water on you right there. But I am very pleased with this. Tim's been very helpful to work with. This was a public bid, the bid opening was here this past Monday. And Tim provided the summary, he was here to do the bid opening with Linda and provided the summary. So if you have any questions, Tim's on the line with us, but otherwise, we would ask for a motion.
Sadness of all the cattail burning pond clearing situations.
The pond area, I believe behind your home, has been carefully treated for the cattails. I know that McGinty has been out and we have paid them, so.
Yeah, we're on the plan that we presented here. I can't remember when it was, I was pretty new here, so I think in January, February, when we presented the plan. As you recall, I told you it would probably take us five to seven years to catch up because the pond's been neglected so, so long.
Right, we met with Tim over at Animal.
You're thinking about the impact this project will have on the ponds? Yeah, so Tim did a calculation and determined that the ponds that are there now are sufficient to handle this additional flow. So there's no expansion of maintenance required for this project. That doesn't mean there isn't maintenance that should be done there. But I couldn't find a way to justify it as part of this project. Now, if you wanted to expand the scope and use the available funds, that's something we could consider. But I didn't think it was within the scope of what the motion was in the prior meeting, which was just the super improvements. Unless, as we discussed then, the capacity of pond could not handle it. This will, by the way, have some impact on the humps between Panama and Island. We have some issues still in Panama, that particular block, 300 block. So this will have a positive impact on backyards in both, on both waters. Um, so this will have a positive impact on backyards in both, on both waters.
Um, typically we see the bids. Um, we didn't see them.
There's, there's a summary of the bids in your pack.
Is that what that spreadsheet?
Yeah, that's a spreadsheet.
That many people bid?
Yeah, there are a lot of bids.
Fair.
Seven days, not fair.
Is there an evaluation? So maybe this is for EEI. Is there an evaluation? Because there's almost, or there's over a twenty thousand dollar difference between our low bid and the next lowest bid. Is there, are we getting the exact same services? What was the variance? That high of a variance from the low to the next lowest?
Aaron, so you, so you're aware in the construction industry, uh, you'll have those spreads because some companies have a tighter uh, safety program than others. And they carry a, uh, the ones that are a little more dangerous, if you will, carry a higher load. So that's.
Yeah, I completely get that part. That's why I didn't compare the low to the high. When we look at the bids for, uh, if you look at the, the tabulate, the first tabulation spreadsheet, if we look at Morrow, Performance, Martam, Stenstrom. They're all within the same mark. And in fact, three of those are within actually a couple of dollars of each other. There's not a big variance. Stark and Son comes in at twenty thousand under the next lowest bid, not the highest bid received. And then all of the other bids seem to be within the ballpark of each other. That's why I'm raising it because it almost seems like an outlier.
Yeah, I can, you know, address some of that. Uh, I think I have my mic on. You can hear me. Um, so, you know, I did talk to their estimator afterwards. Uh, he's confident, uh, he can do, you know, the project for that. They are a local company. Um, so, and he's got this couple subcontractors he needs, uh, to use, he said, are local. And he says he's got, you know, he has prices for the materials, uh, from his suppliers to do it at this, uh, cost. He wanted the job. Uh, we've worked with them for many years on Hampshire Projects and elsewhere. And, you know, they do a good job and good work. So I think, uh, that, you know, we're confident that we're going to get the quality work that we need, uh, with awarding to Stark and Son.
Ken, there were specific, specific specs that they had to meet. They met those specs, right?
Yes. They've agreed to all the plans and, you know, everything that's in the contract documents.
Seems like a major difference here when you go on the line. I have, is the traffic control and protection. There's like ten grand about under everybody else. Is that like a?
Stark.
Stark, yeah.
They'll self perform.
Okay. Yeah, that's. Whereas the others, they would contract that out. Okay.
I've, I've worked for some of these companies. It's amazing. They're still business. Brilliant. And the stuff we did.
Kevin, no, is that? Well, we've got a lot. Oh, yeah. Maybe if it was, if it was a new company, then I'd be even more concerned. But with the company, it's local, we've got business for that. Well, uh, just knowing that they self performed that, uh, that totally puts one mind to be, it's like, we're not. How many safety or? Okay. Keep it local. Local, keep it local, keep it local.
Yeah, it's talking to God.
When is this starting?
Right away. We want to get, it'll be finished by the, uh, I think we're targeting the end of November. Is that right, Tim?
Yeah, it's got a completion date of, uh, November thirtieth.
Start coming. What's that? Jamie? Make it call her. No, seriously, I mean, in, in earnest.
I've been sending your emails. I did.
I wouldn't call her until I saw that backhoe get dropped off.
Drop.
Then I call her.
The bucket's in the ground.
Yes.
So does this, in the future, we know there's still, this only handles a ten-year storm if I'm not mistaken? Or is there plans to expand this project in the future to handle a bigger volume, bigger storm events? We can let him address that case because he's, he gave us quite.
Yeah. So we had, in the presentation we gave in June, we went over some of those alternatives we had done. We, I think we presented it, uh, two years ago. We, there is a larger improvement that can be done to achieve a hundred-year event, uh, for this area that doesn't have an overland, uh, overflow route. That was a four hundred and some odd thousand dollar project and involves, um, replacing an eighteen-inch storm sewer existing with a thirty-inch storm sewer. What we're doing now is replacing a restrictive ten-inch storm sewer around the inlets in the lower area with a fifteen-inch. So we can get that lower area quicker, to drain quicker to the eighteen-inch and get it out sooner so that it has more uh, capacity before it overflows into that residence, uh, uh, basement. So yes, there is a future improvement that could be made, uh, to increase the, uh, level of protection.
But we, you know, we also talked about looking at other areas and then, and then outside of town too. Maybe that's another part of the conversation to target other areas that would have positive effect on.
We did at the last, uh, meeting, you authorized us to have EEI do the engineering work for Panama State. And that work, the engine, the preliminary concept has been addressed so that it's at, it's at the point where it could be bid also if you wanted to.
And, and that project as well would have positive impact on Highland Avenue because you have a lot of water in that area in the last.
I can't really speak to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they would, they really, uh, impact each other. Because there's a, you know, there's a high point in between those two areas. So this, the water at Panama State is going to the west and this water is going to the east.
It's a single one of the floods off of, right? No, it, they will suck. And there's no doubt about it. It's all terrible. This will be nice improvement. I think it's a wait and see. You'll see what kind of benefits come from this. And I, I think that the next, as opposed to taking this one to the hundred year, which I think is the rational long-term corrective program. I think we see what this does and it doesn't, I think we do it to Panama State next.
Well, yeah, we were, we were definitely, we were going to put a pipe in the, uh, swamp at Panama and Centennial.
Right.
Which would alleviate two blocks that way and two blocks that way.
Um, and that's what this is.
And, and then that eventually that, that area, that swamp was supposed to all be cleaned and burned and reestablished into a pond. And then that was going to flow into the pond behind me. But there's a berm that runs the entire way. And there's no way for the water to get over. I walk it every single day. So my suggestion to EEI was to put a pipe between them and pitch it so that when the Panama pond fills up to a certain point, it runs into the White Oak Pond.
Yeah. So, I mean, those are all connected as you, as you note. So they do, it does overflow into the, the rest of the system at a, at a certain point. Um, not into that pond directly south, but into the wetland area to the southeast.
I'd have to go, I, 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 I challenge to meet somebody out there and go through it because, uh, what was it? When you looked over on Elm, how many years ago was that? Five years ago or something? The, the dry retention basin right behind me was full. Never had water and it was full, five feet because there was a tree down somewhere black in the grate to let the water out. Okay. Uh, no water has ever came from that, from that, uh, Panama pond, Panama Centennial, over the White Oak.
Right. And it's very unlikely that it would. It, in this situation, the, the amount of water that we're diverting is very helpful to the, uh, capacity of the Highland Storm Sewer. But it's not significant to the amount of storage and capacity in that, uh, that, you know, the flow that's already coming to that wetland area.
Tim, can you explain why, uh, water does not flow from one to the other? That's just what you just mentioned.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch that.
Yeah, could, could you make your statement again?
The swamp over at Panama and Centennial, why doesn't that drain into the White Oak Pond?
Because the way, it was the way it was set up at the design, there was, there were certain areas that were, uh, wetland areas and certain areas that were detention ponds. So it's, they were separated as part of the, our Army Corps permit originally with the development of White Oak Ponds. Because they wanted to preserve those areas. The wetland areas are supposed to be preserved as wetlands and the stormwater ponds maintained as stormwater basins.
Any other questions or comments? One, one question I have, I see on, uh, island number twenty-nine that we're removing fourteen trees. I don't see anywhere where we're replacing any trees. Where are these parkland trees that are going with or are they?
That's, that's, uh, so the, that's fourteen, that's one, actually one tree, one fourteen-inch tree diameter tree. Because those are units, uh, inch diameter units, not individual trees. So that's one tree. It's in a, it's in a side yard. We did not have a replacement in the, in the contract.
We should have a conversation with that homeowner. So it's a four, one fourteen-inch tree.
Correct.
Are we going to have a conversation with the person who's tree this is in their side yard before we go rip it out? Yeah, there's more in the village.
Yes. Sorry.
I wanted to show up and take out fourteen-inch tree. Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Jay about that and we, I think it's our, Jay's intention, the village's intention is we're going to talk to those two homeowners. Where we'll be in their yards, obviously, before we show, they show up with the backhoe.
It's not Jamie's yard.
Hope the tree's not in Jamie's yard.
You, yeah, you ain't lying. All right.
The correct amount is eighty-three thousand nine seventy-five or, or.
Yes, you're. You're worrying that.
Nine seventy-five. So I will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, Highland Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project to Stark and Sons. In the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So move.
Questions or comments?
Get it started.
Call call William.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Jacky.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Motion passed through.
Mr. Perry, we have a, I don't know. A motion to approve a professional services agreement with EEI for design engineering for connection of the water main not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Including a hundred and nine thousand four sixty-eight in design engineering and twenty-one thousand nine hundred indirect expenses. Um, I'll introduce this briefly and give you some history and then I'll, Julie is here, of course, to answer any technical questions. There are two significant, um, issues here. One is that we're, um, uh, making the first step forward in the north-south water connection. As you know, we've spent a lot of time planning this project over the years and EEI's been working on this project for about three years, uh, for the village. Uh, which, which addresses one of the major points and that is that staff is recommending that we contract with EEI for this project. And that we not go out for qualifications. Um, I have summarized for you, um, actually Josh prepared that portion of the, of the, um, agenda supplement. So I want to acknowledge Josh and thank you for his help. Uh, the portion that addresses the bidding of professional services, the state statute does not permit, uh, that, that these types of services be bid based on dollars. Um, it's only based on qualifications. Um, and given the qualifications, uh, including the qualification manual that, uh, was provided by, to staff by EEI this past March. Uh, in their experience with this project, we think that they are by far the most qualified engineering for to do this. Um, I did work with Brad to work on the numbers and we negotiated this number. It's less than their original estimates. And so we think this is a, a fair number. Um, I also want to summarize for you where we are in the, in the, um, project and the funding for the, for the project. As I believe you all know, we received two member initiative grants for, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Senator Dewitt was very helpful getting for us. And, uh, and then we have the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's been around for several years that was authorized this past May. Both of those grant applications have been submitted and we expect them both to be approved by the end of the year. Uh, in addition to that, we received a seventy-five thousand dollar, um, unbudgeted reimbursement from DCEO on costs related to well number nine, the well number nine project. So that's revenue that we received that was not budgeted or anticipated. So we're applying those funds towards this project. Uh, which gives us, um, roughly nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars available for the project. Uh, which, which is estimated to be between one point six and one point eight million. Uh, the further progresses made is that Attorney Schuster has now negotiated, um, with the property owners along Gas Road. And we're very close to an agreement on Gas Road easements. Uh, the route that's preferred route right now would go up the east, uh, the northbound lane on the east side, right in the, in the road, in the township road. Uh, so we will be, um, tearing up the road right down the middle of it. Um, and then we'll be repairing and replacing that, that roadway and repaving it for them. Um, that was required because of all the other cabling and pipeline, uh, easements there on both sides of the road. There's really no, no space to put this line anywhere else other than right under the road. Uh, but because it is the most direct route, it is still the least expensive of the options that were considered. So with that, uh, I think we finally got into, one, one, one last point I want to make is that by doing this engineering work now, uh, we will be more shovel ready and more ready for the next time the governor comes out or DCEO comes out with shovel ready projects. Uh, we were not eligible for the twenty-five million dollars that he made available early, excuse me. Nearly several billion dollars, uh, that he made available earlier for fast track projects. Uh, because we didn't have the, we, we didn't have permitting or engineering first and permitting as well as easements. So when this work is finished, um, we will be in a very good place to go out, go after additional rebuild Illinois funds that are available. If they're not available, then I'll be recommending to the board probably, if not, not this fiscal year, but in fiscal twenty-two, that we consider, um, bonds or an EPA multiple balance. This project, we're, we're starting to really focus on our capital spending now, um, with, with the Water and Sewer Department. In fact, we met with, uh, Marcus yesterday. And, uh, and we're spending a lot of money on this, the system that is going to be abandoned at some point. And we continue to have, um, problems with the wellhouse up there. And we're just very concerned about, as you've all been for years, about that well supporting the fastest growing area in town in terms of, of, of business and industrial development. So this is a real priority and I think this is a big step forward.
We used to have, I, I was surprised when you said that we're going with the shortest route because I assumed that would be the cheapest. But these estimates have moved significantly. I thought the cheapest was closer to, and I know time and inflation, but it seems one point six and one point eight is significantly higher. That used, that's higher than the old highest. So I'm just curious, at least I don't know.
Materials.
Made that much.
Let's, let's interject a minute. Um, Julie, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Do you have the estimates?
Thank you.
Uh, do you, Julie, do you have the estimates for the Gas Road Route?
I'm sorry. Say it again.
Do you have the budget in front of you for the Gas Road, uh, Route?
My estimates?
The total project estimate, right?
Uh, yeah, let me pull that up here.
The one point six is high. I think that, I believe that number for Gastro is more like one point three million.
That's right. That makes more sense to me.
Now, we do.
Go ahead.
Uh, we do have some additional costs for, um, for the easement negotiations. And I'd rather not go into detail on that. Is there individuals involved?
No, no, that, I mean, dropping it to one point three makes more sense because I, I thought the old estimate was around one point one for the shortest route. So go from one point one to one point three.
And we are going, as you pointed out, pointing out to the older road, there's additional repaving and.
Sure.
But it's still the, the least expensive.
Fantastic.
I am trying to find my, I have a couple of job numbers for this, so I apologize. I'm, um, trying to find my estimate folder.
See which of the three of us is the first.
I haven't been in the estimate folder in a while, so I apologize. Oh, come on. Ah, here they are. I found them. Ah, here they are, I found them. So the option one route, which was Route twenty, our estimate was dated February thirteenth of twenty twenty. Uh, all in engineering, um, design, construction and all the, um, this did include a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of construction engineering. Um, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of design engineering was, uh, one point six eight million. Option two, um.
Uh, Julie, just the total budget for the option one. Total construction budget.
One point six eight.
Uh, construction, um, was. Do you want easement acquisition in there too, or just, uh, preliminary cost estimate was, uh, one point four?
Including the, including the easements, please, Julie.
Uh, at this time, we had only anticipated five thousand dollars in easement acquisition, but I don't know what that, that number is probably a little low. Um, so we, it would be one point six eight minus two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly would be your design engineering estimate with easements. That's what we had estimated.
About one point four five million.
Um, option two, which was going, um, actually going north.
We're just, just talking about option one right now.
Option one is Route twenty.
I'm sorry, we're just talking about the Gas Road option.
Gas Road option was, um, one point four five million minus two hundred and twenty thousand was roughly my estimate at the time.
One, two, three.
That sounds, yeah, that sounds right.
Alright, thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. And I will, um, just as a reminder, the, um, just as the scope, the scope of work on the project is, um, essentially three projects in one. If, if this members, for village board members weren't aware. Um, it includes a water main project. Uh, it also includes a pressure reducing valve similar to what we did on Dietrich Road a few years ago. I don't know if you all remember that, where we had to put in a, um, uh, below grade, pre manufactured, uh, pressure reducing valve station to, uh, replace the existing one. And then it's also the decommission of wat- water treatment plant number seven, as well as the abandonment of well number seven. So there's, uh, essentially, uh, one project, three projects rolled into one.
Okay. How much in engineering fees have we already paid towards this?
I may have something, uh, lost by accident.
Do we have, do we have that entered?
Do we not have, Julie or anybody, does, do we not have that information?
Trustee Kelly, I was just looking at the invoicing today for the prior, um, fiscal year. We, I believe, uh, E E I invoiced us about four thousand dollars in fiscal twenty twenty that just ended. Um, I can't speak to anything before that time, but I can certainly check and give you a total tally.
Okay, Ju- Julie, I know you're on the call. Do you have the record in your documentation of what the total charges have been to the village for this connection project? Or any estimates, uh, any engineering, any drawings, anything related to this connection up to this date?
Um, up to this date, we have been approved by, um, village staff to do twenty-five hundred dollars worth of, uh, a very basic topographic survey that was needed. Um, to do some basic analysis for where the water main would, uh, be put so that we could have some more detailed discussion with the property owners as far as easements and, cause we knew the property owners would want to know where this water main was going. So there has been, um, I know that value, I believe, was, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, was twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's right, but in previous years, when you developed all the budgets and various routes, was the village billed for those services?
Um, that I would have to, I don't have at the, at my fingertip at the moment, cause there are a few, a few job numbers related to that. But that is information that I can, I can assess and provide.
I'm gonna tell you, Trustee Kelly, that I think it's probably around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars total, but that's, that may be a high number and it's just an estimate. But I can certainly provide that for you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to estimate what the total engineering cost is now going to be for this project. Now that we're looking at it an additional, whatever this is, hundred and, where is it out here? Hundred and thirty-one thousand three sixty-eight. If we've already paid twenty-five thousand, if we've already paid thirty thousand, it's a hundred and sixty thousand for engineering on this project up to this date. And I'm wondering what, let's say we did that, what is the additional covering that has not already been done? Or are we saying that things could have changed so much that we're gonna have to redo some of this work and that accounts for these hourly rates? Cause I do see that in section C, this bid is based on an hourly rate not to exceed in addition to direct expenses of twenty-one thousand nine hundred. So this is looking at hourly wages based on the schedule that we were presented, the two thousand eighteen schedule of charges. And the hourly ranges are, are a hundred and nine thousand four sixty-eight. So my question is, if we've already done a lot of engineering work towards this, let's call it thirty thousand, let's call it twenty thousand on the low side. So twenty percent of what you're, the hourly is now, what is the additional that needs to be done that has not yet already been done in these other jobs?
Uh, Trustee Kelly, we really haven't done any engineering work yet and quote unquote engineering work. What we've been doing is concept plans and various routes and a lot of work to determine, uh, how this could be done, uh, various options. But now we have to get into the, the preliminary engineering so that the work can be bid. And that's what this step is. This is similar to what we authorized on Island Avenue just a few, a couple of months ago. So that they develop bid specs, so it's ready to go to construction. Uh, any work that's been done up until now is strictly conceptual and preliminary concept, really concept designs that would allow the village to determine which routes were possible. And then negotiate the most cost effective route, including the ability to get easements. There were as many as five different routes, I believe, uh, that were evaluated. And that's the, that, those, that's where we spent the funds earlier.
Okay, and I, you know, and one of the things I'm trying to understand, and there's people on the board that, with a ton more experience than I on this. When we look at other projects where we have engineering services as a major cost is associated with that project, we look at things like the streetscape. So when I look at the streetscape proposed budget and then we look at this project proposed budget, engineering costs for this are about ten percent of the overall estimated cost, right? One point three to one point six, this is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, so it's about ten percent. In the other project, it's like thirty percent plus. So how do we figure out what the right percentage for professional services in a project is? And how do we ensure that, um, that we don't run into a situation again where we pay thousands of dollars for a concept created by a firm and then have to pay that firm to then tell us how that concept is gonna come to life? Why isn't that just one project?
Well, it's, it's, it's various options, Trustee Kelly. We had, as I said before, we, the village requested, because there were difficulties negotiating easements, um, on Gas Road with the, with the landowners. The village requested that E E I consider looking at other, other routes, other, other easements that might be easier to negotiate, but more expensive to build. The preference has always been the most direct route down Gas Road. And I can share with you the five or six different proposals that we've been looking at since I arrived last December. And I can also tell you, however, that this is just the first half of the engineering. This is just the, the development specs for bidding. The next phase will be construction management of the project itself, and that would be another ten to fifteen percent. So I would answer your other question, that twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent is typical of engineering costs for projects like this.
So this isn't the full engineering cost for this project, this is just for drawings.
Right, and, and what I will share with all of you after this meeting, that are the budget, is the budget for Gas Road, which includes the, the both, this phase of engineering and the second phase of engineering. So we've been aware, in, in that one point, uh, two, three million dollars that we came up with just a little while ago, that includes both phases of engineering.
Okay, uh, my last question, then I'm gonna mute the wall here. Um, Julie in here, under C for the compensation maximum amounts due to engineer. You, we were talking about the fact it says hourly not to exceed in the amount of one oh nine four sixty-eight, direct expenses are estimated at twenty-one thousand nine hundred. And that we're following a standard schedule, but I don't see in this R F P anywhere what the hour to job alignment is. Meaning there are different, if you look at that standard, the, the standard schedule of charges, different roles, different job codes, different people involved are at different rates. So where is the breakdown of what you estimate in hours per job code or rate that comes to the one oh nine four sixty-eight?
It's in attachment C.
Um, did I miss this, is it not in here?
Then towards the end of the packet, second to last, second, third last page.
Okay, so that's the one where it says principal in charge, senior project manager, senior project engineer, one project engineer.
Correct.
And those are hours allocated each?
That is, that is correct, those are hours.
Okay. The wall will shut up now.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Coe?
No. Yeah. Excited.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Robinson? No. On it?
Yeah, just kidding.
Oh. Mr. Kajeki?
No, I'm excited, let's keep going, let's go through this. Let's do it.
I want to entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with E E I for the nine engineering, uh, the connection to water main not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Oh, ooh. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Kajeki?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Absolutely.
Mr. Orme?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
What's your best guidebook?
You know, I would like to make one note, if I can, I would like it to be in the minutes. And it's a thank you to Mr. Brust, former, uh, um, trustee Brust, who I think originally set up the meeting with, uh, Senator Dewitt. Was originally, which was a huge help in getting us to this point, and I think he deserves proper recognition for that.
Okay, we, we get to the real meat of the, of the agenda tonight. We have a motion to approve a rapal, uh, for, for the, uh, St. Romeo School.
Calendars.
Any questions?
Number one, never.
I've never won.
Number one, you gotta play.
I played.
T V will say a calendar this year.
So we attend.
Yeah, I bought him ten.
All I need is one. Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the rapal license for King Charles Romeo School. Dragons.
Wait, move.
Eric, good. E-Rob.
Reed.
Any questions or comments?
Mass ventriloquism.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kajeki?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion to pass it through.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, a, a resolution approving a twenty twenty motor fuel tax program expenditures. And, uh, I'll hand this over to, to Finance Director Lyons after just a brief comments saying that, uh, uh, the, the, um, hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we are, um, notifying the state in this resolution that we'll be spending on, on street department salaries. We talked about this in the finance committee, I believe, when we were working on the Highland Avenue project. So we're transferring a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We will be using motor fuel tax funds for the street department salaries, which is a permissible expense, so that we can free up the funds for Highland Avenue. And then we'll have, now that that came in well under budget, we'll have about, uh, sixty, seventy thousand dollars available for other things, general fund expenditures. Or to fill.
And vulgar.
Or, or to fill a gap in our, in our general budget, which we're gonna talk about the next time. But with that, I may have to worry.
So, um, essentially you have in front of you the official I dot, uh, resolution document showing, uh, as Mr. Hedges stated, a hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars in street salaries. And then two hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars in ice control that will be our salt expenditures expected for the year. So the total requested is six ninety-five to ninety-seven.
What's that leave us in that account?
There are approximately six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance from prior years. So, um, there will be money left over then, plus all of the funds that we will be receiving this year to date, which is, um, about two hundred and ten thousand.
And we do have funds set aside, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand for the state and Gessman and seventy-two, uh, signalization that'll be coming up next July.
For real this time?
Yes, they, the state is, the state has already shared their engineering with us and E E I and the village have both commented. And we have, uh, the, uh, uh, rerouting of the, the intersection will be closed for a couple of weeks and we have a detour routing. Yes, it's moving, it's moving on right around.
Cause they said like July, three or four July ago.
It was that one guy, the holdout.
I know.
That's right.
But it.
And then. Trustee Coe.
He's not a neighbor.
Before the end of November, we'll be bringing to Public Works Committee our, uh, first, um, capital plan for our streets. And we now have a three-year plan, if we just, so we kind of have, like, yesterday, we shared with Harris. And that will be, uh, budgeting the entire, um, motor fuel tax plan. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash fourteen, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Uh, to expand, uh, authorize expenditure of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred, uh, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars of M F T fund. Sorry, for twenty twenty. You're the first and the second so quickly. Any questions or comments?
I moved a second, whatever.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
It was in stereo.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Kajeki?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion to pass it through.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, we have a fiscal year twenty twenty-one full year revenue forecast. Uh, I'm gonna thank, uh, Lori for her hard work on this. Uh, she had to struggle with me and my private sector forecasting, um, methods, but she's done a really good job. Uh, this comes from, uh, obviously from helping the Illinois municipality. Um, and we have some good news on CARES Act funding, so I'm gonna give this to Lori and let her present it. And the bottom line is that we're not in as bad a shape as we put there. But you'll see some real numbers now. And I can see you've all flipped to the back page, so.
The back page is not the good page, anyone.
Right.
Um, so tonight, my review is just going to concentrate on the village's three main operating funds and the revenue inflows. The general fund, the water fund and the sewer operating fund. Uh, we record all inflows and outflows for our core administrative and operational tasks, um, in our general fund. And then, um, including all wages, uh, lease department, streets and admin. And then, uh, the same is true of the utility funds, uh, wages are paid out of the water and sewer operating funds as well. Um, so depending on the sources, um, of revenue, local general funds can be severely significantly and swiftly impacted by economic recessions. So COVID nineteen and the pandemic and all the associated shutdowns have had, um, a quicker and deeper than, uh, typical effect of a normal recession. So, um, what I'd like. So, um, what I'd like to do is, um, kind of just hit the highlights on the second slide.
Does Mr. Kelly have access to this?
Yes.
A big model copy?
Yeah, I've got it up on my second screen here.
Yeah, so initially the general fund revenues were projected to end the year at four point oh two million dollars. Um, and, uh, about four hundred thousand dollars, actually three point nine nine thousand or a million dollars, four hundred thousand dollars short or ten percent to lower our budgeted revenues. So that was significant. This decline in revenues was primarily due to, um, the impact of COVID, having, having lower sales tax revenues, uh, places for eating tax, fewer fines and fees, and reduced charges for services. Um, one source of revenue not included in the original budget was, um, as Jay discussed, the federal CARES Act support that we're receiving through King County's coronavirus relief fund. Um, that's expected to reimburse the village for a significant portion of police salaries for the period March one through December thirtieth. And the reimbursement is expected to toll three hundred and sixty seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. So of the four hundred thousand dollar impact of our lower revenues, three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars of that will be, um, reimbursed, you will, by the CARES Act fund. Um, the next slide shows our state shared revenue assumptions. This is a, um, so I take your credit for this. This is all, um, in, from the Illinois Municipal League, uh, review newsletter that we receive. Um, the last two columns are the important ones in this particular slide. You will note that, uh, our per capita revenue is expected to go down in nearly every single instance. Um, income tax, motor fuel tax, um, and then, uh, our PPRT is also going down on a percentage basis. So, um, I utilize the IML, uh, revenue assumptions. Without them, I'm not sure exactly what I would do, because it would be kind of a wild guess. They have, uh, some highly paid actuaries, um, and they are looking at everything from gross domestic product to, um, unemployment to determine what these revenue assumptions are. So the good slide is the next one. Um, general fund revenues with the CARES Act funding are expected to decrease by, um, only fifty three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Water fund revenues look to be down fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And sewer funds down nineteen thousand, three seventeen. So essentially of our six point two million dollar operating fund budget, um, the village expects a one point four percent decrease for approximately ninety thousand dollars. Um, in the next slide, this is, this demonstrates, um, the normal share, uh, or split of general fund revenues. We're fortunate to have, um, variable revenue sources. And, um, while state shared revenues are nearly forty percent of the budget, it's actually comprised of five different components. Therefore, property tax is really the only single source of revenue that is, I would consider, uh, significant concentration of our, of our revenue. The next slide, um, shows our original budgeted four point four million dollars and the split of those, um. And then the change, which is down to three point nine nine million in the general fund, with a new piece of pie added, the nine percent, um, CARES Act money in the red, which is at the very top of the pie chart. Again, that nine percent will account for three hundred and sixty seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. That was not originally.
We're only gonna get that for one year.
Yes.
And we hope we'll only have the negative impact of revenue for a moment.
So, so as I mentioned, um, state shared revenues are comprised of five different components. Sales tax, which is one percent of the state's six point two five percent sales tax. Um, state income tax, use tax, personal property replacement tax, and a new tax, um, cannabis excise tax. So state sales tax are expected to be reduced by approximately one hundred nineteen thousand dollars this year. Um, that's a fourteen point seven percent, uh, low budget number. Sales tax receipts, um, lag about three months, so we're, we have, as of September, the, all of these numbers are as of, um, actual receipts as of September thirtieth. So we are only seeing through July's actual receipts, so, you know, we kind of lagged behind. Um, but again, I think that, um, we're going to have to watch the sales tax numbers, uh, very carefully because this is my estimate, this is not an IML estimate. And, um, we do see some, um, gains back in sales tax, but our sales tax revenue is still down quite a bit, um, compared to where we were and what we had projected. Um, with respect to state income tax, uh, this is a number that is, again, derived directly from the Illinois Municipal League. In fact, each of the next four categories, state income tax, use tax, personal property replacement tax, and cannabis use tax are received on a per capita basis. So, um, and that's based on our census from two thousand and ten. So, uh, the IML projects a seven percent reduction in income tax for this, um, fiscal year, a five percent reduction in use tax, and actually a five percent increase compared to their budget, um, or, or their original projections for cannabis excise tax. That, however, only accounts for less than four thousand dollars, um, in revenue to the village. So that increase doesn't really help us out of grade scale. On the next slide, um, includes our other, so what I conclude, other sources of village income, telecom tax, utility tax, charges for services, other income, licenses, fees and permits, and CARES Act funding. So the big pathways on this one are telecom tax is holding pretty, pretty steady. Utility tax is down, um, forecasted about four percent lower than, um, our budgeted revenues. While you might think that, um, having everybody home would increase our utility taxes a lot, the number of, um, or the dollar amount derived from an individual as compared to our industrial and commercial customers is, um, much lower, so we're affected by the, uh, decreases in, um, business openings and those types of things, um, the lower production of materials here in Hampshire, so it looks like that's going to be down. Um, charges for services, the big difference here is the fact that, um, we had budgeted two-thirds of two police officer salaries being reimbursed by the school district. And unfortunately, um, we only have one, uh, school resource officer in school at the present time. And, um, to the school district's benefit, he is a lower-paid employee with lower benefits. Um, and so we will get, uh, less reimbursement. And, uh, like I said, there's only one officer versus two at the present time. Um, other income also includes, um, our food and beverage tax, that's the big item in other income. And, um, when we did our budget, we actually expected to increase our places for eating tax to two percent, and we opted not to do that. I will tell you, however, that, um, the places for eating tax is very strong, um. I mean, we're not seeing half of what we were expecting going from one percent to two percent. Um, so I feel pretty, uh, pretty good about that. It, it will, um, it will be down, as you can see. However, um, it's not going to be half of what we thought it was going to be because, um, sales are really strong in that area. Um, fines or fees are much lower than expected, um, and that's mainly due to what I'd say, less police contact. So we're receiving less tow fees and, um, lower collections from the court system. They were shut down for quite a while, although we are seeing that come back a little bit now. Um, and, uh, those, those types of fines and fees. Um, and then the positive on this particular slide again is the CARES Act funding, which was completely unbudgeted. Uh, so bottom line on this whole thing is, um, that our overall projected revenue will be approximately fifty three thousand dollars less than projected or one point, one point three percent less. Um, and then with respect to the utility funds, um, we have, uh, received, or I expect the, um, the revenues to end at about ninety eight percent of budget. I have taken into consideration our current accounts receivable. Um, and while the accounts receivable dollars are pretty high, um, people are paying their bills. And, um, for the most part, uh, we, I expect to meet our budget uh, projections by ninety eight percent of, of original. So at this time, um, uh, with respect to the water services, we're looking at one percent less in revenue or six thousand, two hundred dollars less. And for sewer charges, about fourteen thousand dollars lower than budgeted. Um, obviously our penalties are way down because we did have a moratorium on, on penalties. So, um, that's about all I have to say. And I did not know earlier, but I did want to say, um, that our property taxes are ninety percent in the, ninety eight percent in the door as of this particular time. And we are spot on, um, expecting to receive our million fifty five thousand with respect to that. So, um, it was very interesting, the curve of receipts in property taxes matched almost a hundred percent from last year. In fact, our, uh, very first property tax distribution was slightly higher, um, on a percentage basis. And I think that this shows that, um, many, many people are escrowing their taxes, and so everything was really paid on a very tiny basis. So, um, in looking at all this, we actually did a projection for all funds. Um, there's a lot to take in. As you know, the budget has many line items. And so, um, we wanted to provide this to you a little bit graphically, if you will, um, and hit the operating funds this particular meeting. Uh, we will go over the rest of the projections and all of the expenses in detail with you at, um, kind of writing the subject at future meetings.
If I could just add a couple of comments. First of all, back to water, our utility, uh, bills are, are roughly eighty thousand dollars past due today, and a normal past due month would be about twenty thousand dollars. So I am starting to get, we're all collectively getting, starting to get concerned about our moratorium on late fees and shut offs. Most of the communities around us have gone back to, um, uh, shutting off water and negotiating arrangements. You might recall, we talked about, I, I'll bring this back to the next board meeting with recommendations, but I won't go into a lot of detail now. But I think it's time for the board to consider changing that, as well as changing potentially a program for financial assistance to those people who might need it. So we'll come back to that, uh, on that later. Um, I'd also like to comment on the CARES Act funding that is not formal yet. Uh, the county board did vote on Tuesday to approve all of the twenty-two communities' funds as, uh, allocated. And we were pleased with the allocation, the three sixty seven, it was allocated us. Uh, as I said at the last board meeting, it has not been a pleasant process, uh, the way the counties handled this. Um, and in fact, today, we, we have not, we, we have still not received our official notification. Uh, a, a couple of communities have. There, there is an intergovernmental agreement that has been distributed. We've not seen our official copy, but we've seen some from other communities, and they have some language in there that is very troublesome. It goes back to the very same point that we negotiated with them for the last, uh, four months. And that has to do with not using these funds to replace funds that were otherwise already budgeted in the budget. Uh, and that would mean that we did have police salaries budgeted, and now we're using police salaries as our funding source, our funding, uh, purpose because the legislation, uh, and the, the Department of Treasury's interpretation of the legislation is very specific, that first responder salaries are by definition included as eligible. And so it took us several months to get the county to agree to that, and now they've come up with, uh, an intergovernmental agreement that is contrary to that. So we're not sure, because we haven't received ours officially yet, we're not sure if that's an error, that they failed to go back and correct that intergovernmental agreement. Or they're gonna put us on the spot, because there will be a whole harmless agreement, disagreement. It says we won't, we will, they are not responsible for our misuse of the funds as allocated by the federal government. So again, it's, in my mind, it's, it's not just legalese, it's a lot of politics at the county level, which I'm somewhat disappointed in. I want to make one last comment. Uh, trustee Kelly, I'd like to go back briefly to the budget, uh, budget discussions we had, um, in the spring. And that was when we talked about the deficit budget this year and the fact that we could not continue to live on a deficit budget. Also the fact that we transferred funds from, from the water and sewer fund into the general fund, to balance the general fund. Um, I've learned a lot more in the last few months, and I, I want to share with, the reason we presented this tonight, this is what we call the operating budget, the operating funds. So these are the three funds that in my mind, um, I believe, uh, should be balanced. Uh, the capital funds, which we'll talk about at, at another meeting in the future, are funds where we, things like the motor fuel tax funds, um, and the utilities capital funds and others are funds that we oftentimes set aside for, and accumulate funds for years, so that we can then spend down for projects. So I think when we talk about balancing the budget, these are the three capital funds that collectively should be budgeted. And ideally, they should be budgeted individually, but at least at the bottom line. And they were in this budget this year, and they will be in the future. So I, I, I don't know if that addresses your question, if you recall that, trustee Kelly, but I did want to mention that. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lynam, Mr. Hedges?
If we wear you out.
Is the, is the CARES Act funding in control of, of the county right now? Or are they still waiting for it to be dispersed by the state, who's waiting for the federal, like, what do we think on time?
It's sitting in their coffers earning interest right now.
It is. Excellent.
And when you hear, when you hear about, uh, federal government saying that states and, and local governments have not spent their money, this is why.
Or that'll all change with the county.
I think COVID's gonna end up there too.
Well, Lawson finally is gonna retire.
Oh, he is?
Yep.
I'll make a big bet it doesn't. I'll check my bank account, I'll bet all of it. I'll match mine against yours.
Let's go. Let's make it a public thing.
Right, any further, I'll max up it.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you for the time, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and good fortune. I mean, considering all the things that happened, as long as the CARES Act, you know, does come through, which it appears it will, being short fifty some odd thousand dollars, considering it's one of the most significant prices that a country's faced in its history, I think is, you should consider yourself. And this is just the first round, I just want you all. No, of course. It's a long way to go. That's not so bad. Could have been a lot worse.
Overpulation?
Uh, census, and today.
Today.
Yeah, today.
Oh, but I saw it.
So they, they, they say that they, uh, as of yesterday, they have accounted, doesn't, doesn't seem to make all that sense to me. Uh, well over ninety nine point nine percent of the housing units have been accounted for, so.
Major.
Probably of seventy percent.
Yeah.
That's sound recording.
Yeah.
So that's the like.
Self-responsible field operations will continue through today, right? So, and everything needs to be postmarked here today. Um, there's that, and, uh, this evening, I attended, uh, a meeting at school district three hundred, it was there, uh, oh man, it's, they have, they have a technical word for it, that I want to make sure that I get it right. Um, the, it's a diversity, equitable, and inclusion committee that the village of Hampshire is a part of. There's twenty-eight members on this committee, um, that the district is formed made up of parents and different community members. Um, the, uh, back when, Carfittersville and, uh, Hampshire are a part of it. No other municipalities seem to be part of it, so, um, there were, I believe, early, so I could get here in time. But we had a really good conversation starting about why. But we had a really good conversation starting about why we're all a part of it. And there are a lot of, not a lot, there were, on the committee, there are three members that came this evening for, are from Hampshire and referenced the incident that happened in June. And, and so we're gonna work together to try to get the right message out there and make sure that we're being inclusive and that kind of thing. So more on that to come. The, the only issue, it's not issue, but is they've scheduled this for the third Thursday of every month for the foreseeable future. So that means I need to probably get a police escort on the way back over town to make it to the meeting on time.
We'll give you one in back.
Yes. That's what I was thinking. I felt like there was something else I needed to talk about, but I can't remember. Oh. Mistletoe Market is coming, the Holiday on State. So Santa, I understand, is gonna be around again. And the, the Bassett Hound, his place is going to be turned into Santa's workshop. So Santa gets to be, so Santa gets to be indoors. There's more information coming, but I'm sure that we'll have some kind of side offers we have in years past. If you guys would like to volunteer something trying to be Santa's help and point people in the right direction. But it's kind of, it's kind of a unique way that they're, they're keeping the tradition going, right? Having most of it outside and, you know, adhering to social distancing. So.
Santa's from the North Pole, not Florida.
Right.
Santa probably would like to be outside.
Santa would like to.
I'll be outside last time.
Yeah, Sam, Santa, Santa complains about.
I'm gonna say that, Marshall.
I'm the one you have to vote on that.
I am your number one.
So other than that, it's trick or treating is happening. So.
Didn't you respond to Mr. Ren's question?
No.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I'm, I did not.
That was, no. He sent it to Mr. Lawson, so I fixed you my.
Ren, that citizen that said we should cancel Halloween?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear about that.
You got the email.
Yes, you did.
I forgot about it.
But no, but maybe Mr. Lawson will.
I'm sure he will.
He copied Mr. Lawson?
He sent it to, we were copying, he sent it to Mr. Lawson.
That's okay. He's got more in his plate than that.
All right.
My name is Tony.
Well, the only thing after that is I had a comment, the police department, there was a potential rabid opossum as a target. And they descended and it's all been taken care of, but they did it swiftly.
How many officers did that require, two? Two. It was identified as a squirrel and an opossum.
Was there any military personnel on site to?
No. There was one supervisor from a distance. He was from a distance with the rake at the red. And if anybody had any video on it, I would probably pay. And I believe. It was good.
Was that new camera we're putting up, did you have caught that?
Sorry?
Was that new camera we're putting up, caught that video?
No, this was over at, by the preschool. Yeah.
It was a big rake.
They wouldn't, they, they wouldn't let me bring my gunner bow and arrow, so I had to call it a bow and arrow. That's all.
Fields of trail.
Ryan.
Um, no reports.
Sorry, I thought we were still on the rabid opossum. My text.
It's now, no report, we still have one. Good services, sir.
No report.
Those works.
No report.
EDC.
Well, I'm gonna break the trend. So we had a meeting last night here in Village Hall, it went fantastic. We had a presentation from A5 Branded, which I think the PR committee is gonna get coming soon. Where they kind of just shared some of the taglines, as well as we looked at some potential brand imagery, logos and things of that nature. So that went really well. And then as a group, we feel like we've kind of come to the end of the street skate project. Is there any other thing to give on that at this point? I meant to ask you that last night, just, I know we're still waiting for the CEO.
CEOs acknowledge receipt of it, that they're way behind on approvals.
Okay.
But they do expect it to be done by the end of the year, which is federal required.
Yeah, which is good. And then, so the committee just did a lot of brainstorming about where to go next. We've accomplished quite a few things in the last three and a half years. And some of the areas that we talked about is maybe the creation of a business consortium with CEOs and owners of local businesses here, where we could have an opportunity for local businesses to share feedback and just to understand what the village is doing. Or make sure they're aware of all the programs that we're running. And then perhaps something around, this is something I talked about with Jeannie at some point. She had a function last evening, she couldn't join us. But something around entrepreneurial, sort of promoting entrepreneurs and maybe creating organized activities to where we can help sort of close the gap between people who want to start businesses and people who don't really know, you know, the business side of the business. So that's gonna be something we're gonna work on, maybe coordinating with the high school and their incubator program. Just sort of focusing on, you know, small businesses, local businesses, things of that nature. So we'll have some more programs hopefully, and we'll be coordinating a lot with the chamber, obviously, because there's a lot of crossover in the function. So, but it was very good meeting. I thought it went really well. I think the PR, the A5 Branded presentation coming up soon, the 21st. Yeah, I think, I think it's some good stuff in there. So. But other than that, our next meeting will be the second Wednesday of November, which I don't know what date that is, but I'll share that.
Hey, a question for you. Is there any appetite, you think, in the business leaders, the CEOs or the execs in our community for the major businesses to come together to help sponsor in one of our open buildings? I know we've got office space throughout the town that's available to sponsor maybe an incubator space, startup space similar. I'm thinking like Chicago's 1871, where we provide infrastructure. It's a, a shared space for startups and they have speakers come in, but it's really meant for startup businesses to start incubating?
Yep. So that's a conversation we've had. We've talked about that on several occasions. Obviously, this small scale Hampshire sort of adds challenges and difficulties. However, we think, to your point, is coordinating with, you know, a little bit closer and sort of building relationships with some of our business owners who might have access to capital and might be interested in doing something. Obviously, we have the daughter of the owner of the Stanley Corporation sits on our, on our board. That's obviously the kind of person that you're interested in helping us do those things. But I think that that's a great idea, and it's something that we've talked about before. And it's something that, it's certainly a goal of our committee, is to do something unique and different around entrepreneurship, just because we think we can. And I think certainly an incubator space is a really great idea towards that. So, yeah. So for certain. But I think that would, Aaron, that would be a product that would come out of this relationship with some of the business owners in town. But yeah, I think that's a great idea. Absolutely.
Right, isn't it, brother, sure?
All right, quite a tense couple on it.
First, I want to say how disappointed I am that I missed the last meeting, because I would have been the first committee reporter. Oh, so now I'm last. I know, and I missed my turn. Okay, so we have a couple of the accounts payable. Let's do the reimbursements. So there is $321.24 to be paid back to 70 people on or before October 21st, 2020. Any questions? Motion, please.
So I want to take a motion to approve accounts payable, the amount of $321.24. Thank you, motion. Second, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Great Jackie?
Aye.
And our regular accounts payable, $303,816.45 to pay down before October 21st, 2020. Yes, Toby?
Uh, page 12. And page 11 at the bottom. What is VH Rehab?
The back room and the back side of the building.
If you haven't been out back yet, please take a look on your way out tonight. Looks really different than it did a while ago.
Inside?
Outside.
Oh.
And then page 15.
Yep.
We're currently not seen in violation of our.
Sweet.
Winter gloves, $353.247. Looks like it's 600 bucks.
Yep. Yep, we provide gloves to the street department. Do you want a pair?
Get a pair. 600 dollars.
Do you want some summer gloves?
No.
Any other question? I got a question. What did we pay for an appraisal for?
For the, oh, Village Hall site, excuse me, the current, probably the oldest garage site.
Oh, yes, the current, yeah, the current, I'm sorry.
So that we can consider selling that when and if we report a future policy. We had to have a legal appraisal, rather than a real estate appraisal.
And that's a really good deal. It's, no, it was twice that. Oh, we had to pay eight upfront? That's three here. That's really not a good deal. $1,800?
He was out there for a lot.
I don't care.
By the way, the appraisal came in at 350.
350,000?
Yeah.
320,000.
I'm sorry, 220,000. And we're required to sell it for 80% of the praise value if we have buyer. If we don't have anybody at that price, then we can negotiate below that. We did, we did have an interested party, which is why I moved forward with the appraisal. But if we do move, we'll, we'll want to do that anyway.
That's hard to say.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, it is high on the list.
I want to entertain a motion to approve accounts payable about $303,816.45. So move.
Thank you.
Pretty quick question to the panel. Roll call, please.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Good Jackie?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
I have one more thing.
One more thing?
Regarding the, what are we calling it? Holiday on State?
This is the market?
She requires that Chamber hands out a sales tax form to all vendors.
I found it here.
Okay. There's a chief volunteer to do it, we have to apply it now.
You just have a gift to you. There's a special event, I'll, I'll look at it. There's a special event for that.
So all these people are gonna call the Chamber people?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right.
Thank you.
Any new business service announcements?
One quick thing, we will have a street closure tomorrow for the cave and GABR and fundraiser. And the businesses and neighborhoods were notified this time.
Uh-oh.
Correct. Yes, I emailed you.
I do, right.
I sent you emails.
I see.
Miss Jan Satt, donation, longtime Hampshire resident. He's a fundraiser for Jan, so stop by anytime, buy food, buy raffle tickets to support the Satt family. Sure, Gary will be there. I have a few choice words for you.
He has a few choice words for everyone.
Here he is.
It's scary though.
I don't know if it's more for public relations or the chamber, or sorry, but like I was through Genoa the other day and their village sponsored a, like, community do a scarecrow thing and tie them to the light bulbs. It got, I mean, if you saw it, it was pretty cool. It got the community involved. It got people out of their cars and in the downtown area. So I was wondering if there's something we could do as a village to bring the residents, like, like a decorator wreath or a snowman or something and put them up on the light bulbs just to get people involved.
Snowman, I like that. I like the snowman idea.
Blood raccoons before, we did snowmen before.
They also did, and it should be easy to do, but they also did like a QR code on each one where you could vote. So all you had to do was stick your phone into it and it took you right to the Google form. You picked who you liked the best and you voted for him. So.
That sounds really cool.
It was kind, it was really cool. It got, like, we drove through a guy.
The city sponsor or is it the Chamber account?
I, I don't know, but I think this is a good opportunity for us to work together here.
I can call Mark on, but tomorrow.
Okay. It was really cool. So I thought it was a cool idea. I thought it was a great idea to get people to the downtown area, because we struggle with that. Because we're off the beaten path. So just a thought, like, we'll be here November 17.
All right, anything else?
Uh, what was the power outage and all the?
Rabid squirrel.
Or possum. It went through the light at Wintry.
Win.
Oh, wasn't it like Heartland Bank?
It was everywhere.
The water may have break by, and it hurt the bay. The problem is with the electric at Wintry.
Screwed through the water.
That's what I was told.
Well, I know the high school campus in Gary Wright was out by 45 minutes.
Yeah, I saw what it's whole.
I think it was when.
Actually, the, the lift station on Higgins was back up before the village was. But I heard that, it was you, Jay, I think, that said it was someplace west.
It was as far as Marengo.
West of Briar Hill.
No, what I was explaining was, which is kind of humorous, was that I was driving on Briar Hill Road and I saw a comment truck. And I stopped to see if he knew what was going on. And he said, no, we're looking for it.
That's always good.
He was literally driving in a pickup truck on Briar Hill.
That was a polite way of saying, we're trying to ditch.
We're coming in time.
Baited.
Apparently, they were just driving around looking for the outage. I thought maybe computers were telling them.
You know, those smart meters seem to really be doing the trick, because they, they told me yesterday that there was outage in my house and they didn't know when, like, my meter reported that the power was out. And I jumped on my Anta back, like, a therapist at home, and it was online. So I was like, oh, obviously there's power. So like, smart meters, I guess, smart.
Took it down.
With your rake?
Yeah. Biggest garage.
They're gonna be looking down.
I couldn't get out of the garage.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you over all the talking. What am I voting on?
Your name.
Aye. Seriously, when more than one person talks, you can't hear you guys on here.
Why?
Well, just so you know, Mr. Kelly, the two, we've never been talking about two all night.
I know, I can hear every.
Yes. No. Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.